Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the zoning and planning board. I guess there was one to three for eyes and for the reasons.
Goodbye, United States of America, and to the Republic for its standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. June, may I call please?
Andy?
Yes.
And I think it's a?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
The Jasmine?
I'm here in the investment.
Elberton?
Yes.
Uh, all family, Jackson, John, and then that's, and then there's out, Otis is out. Anthony Beatrice?
Here.
And over?
Here.
David Rowan?
Here.
And Brian Wall?
Here.
Okay. Public notice of this meeting for shortly, open public meeting act has been given by the board in the following manner, posted on board and board in the borough's office and emailed to the retrospect and the carrier post. First order of business is the approval of the ministry in July, I agree. Do you have any questions?
Subgroup.
Motion to be with Mr. Dickinson, second. Second one, Mrs. Bush, in all favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Rowan, um...
If you're fully proceeding the application, does it have to, uh, give the, uh, that, uh, bill and Anthony fill in for Joe and, uh?
Joe's here.
Oh, Joe's here? Then why don't you want to fill in then for John, I guess, so we have a?
Yeah, so he's opposite number one.
Tony, okay. So you'll be able to vote, so you're gonna fill in for John.
Mr. Go.
Thank you.
He'll be here.
Here from midnight, okay?
Thank you.
Listen, you wanted to part of your characters.
Well, I kick. It's something to vote, I charge.
Okay, the first order of business we have here on our new business is a use variance. And Mr. Rowan, um, do you want to pump up or bifurcate this, or?
Yeah, come on up. Folks, um, anybody who was gonna give testimony tonight, would you please raise your right hand?
All three.
Yep.
And you solemnly swear or affirm that the, any testimony that you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate, you best be not. Addison, you got a copy of Brian's review letter?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and you understand that the, our engineer deemed the application incomplete?
Right.
What I would suggest, uh, and to complete the application looks like it would be some economic expenditures that would have to be done, but you're?
What I was gonna do was it looked like it was reviewed as a site plan, but this is only a use variance. We don't have any rock out, proppings or streams or things of that nature. I was gonna ask the board if they would grant us the waiver to those requirements, because if you go through them, there are site plan requirements and we're not changing the site plan at all.
You'd have to address that with Brian, then?
The only outstanding one that I would ask for is an updated survey. The survey that was provided was back in, I believe it was eighty-eight?
Yeah.
And it looked like there were more additions put on the house inside survey.
We could, we, we would do that. Subject to getting approval tonight.
The only question that arises is it appears that the impervious coverage is over the required, early of the deal out by the orders. So that would be a variance. Would that be in conjunction with the use variance then?
Yes.
I, I think, and I believe that the survey that was submitted doesn't accurately portray all the, the present as-built buildings and shedding there.
It did, and I did put the building numbers on the back, I put that on the, on the survey. But again...
Because I think the board would like to see, and I, I mean, unless the board feels differently, but especially for a use variance, an as-built exactly where the, all the buildings and outbuildings are and?
The survey does show that.
It does?
How was the statement? See how I added on the building in the back? That's what, that's what the survey shows.
Oh, is, of this you, this was added on by you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There appears to be more to the back of that, probably more patio or open, uh?
Just the back deck.
Deck?
Yeah.
And is this frame shed? Does this frame shed the scale, Addison?
I didn't, I didn't look up there, the engineer did.
You mean, the, the original survey?
Yes, sir. Anything I added was the building in the back. And, and again, for a use space, I, I understand what the engineer is saying relative to the impervious coverage, but you're not adding any impervious coverage either. Well, you know, it's, it's a month ago last week.
It's up to the board. I mean, if you bifurcate it, I don't know if you can, there may be information that our engineer says we need in order to make a determination that the use variance should be granted.
But what I was, I was gonna do, if I intended to do that, have Mrs. Madder make the presentation on the case, then I was gonna address the issues that you had to deal with.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's fine.
I mean, they're, my, my opinion, just one person, but they're, they're here, so I, I'd like to at least give them opportunities to speak on the application, and then if we actively speak on the application, if we determine that we need more information, then we can always say so.
No, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
And if we vote on it and the application is successful in getting the variance, right? It's, it's like a picture approval of the application by itself, and there's many discrepancies that I think have to be satisfied to, to the collection of our professional representatives before I?
Sure, I think it would have to be conditional. I mean, you agree, Brian, if we do anything, everything has to be conditional?
Definitely, yeah.
I mean, if we do, if we do anything, it's like, everything has to be conditional on whatever, uh, you know, pet associates and Mr. Rowan see fit. And I think if we hear the testimony?
I mean, yeah, I think it would be proper that we can hear testimony so they can, um, as, as Brian or John set out in his, in his review letter, the criteria that the applicant has to show and the proofs offered, and, you know, they can give testimony tonight, then the board can make a determination of whether, you know, that's, you know, if, if they met their burden of proof. So absolutely, we can take that testimony tonight.
At the end of the testimony, we deem it to be incomplete, or we deem it that they haven't, you know, proved, uh, you know, hardship or whatever criteria they're asking for the use variance under.
Well, we're gonna make it a two-step operation tonight. They're gonna get their, get their separate approval, they're gonna get their approval first for the variance, and then we're gonna hear testimony on the application.
Well, I think what Mr. Rowan was speaking correctly is not wrong, is if you bifurcate it, it might be false prohibitive for them?
It, it may be. Now, I, I don't know, I, I think that we can hear the testimony tonight, we might not be able to vote on it until?
Exactly.
Until something, so no, in, in Dick's inquiry, no, an approval might not be granted tonight, Dick.
Right, and there's?
You're gonna hear testimony tonight, and then you're gonna make a determination of whether they, they, uh, satisfied the criteria. Their next step would be, the things that are missing, or Brian thinks is proper, they would have to then present that, come to the next meeting. I don't know if there'll be voting on anything tonight, other than each individual member giving your opinion that they haven't met the burden to prove that there's either a hardship or that it promotes the, uh, the public good, the use variance, the rent and the use variance would promote the public good. So it looks like it would be a two, a two-phase, uh, procedure, a two-part procedure. But if you said the board feels tonight, no, we don't think you've met your burden, then they're not gonna go to the expense of the money of having it possibly re-surveyed and trying to, uh, uh, satisfy our engineers' incentives.
So basically, I'm just saying, I don't think there's any harm, at least here in the testimony, and then getting a flavor for how we'll feel about it, without making them spend, without making them spend the money on surveys.
Mary's like, well, I don't know if it, you've met your, I, I'm not satisfied. Let's go. Let's go. See what they have.
You're already, you're already hearing money, well.
I don't do that for our sense of justice.
And you have also payment that? What else go ahead? Okay, Mr. Bradley?
Anthony, we heard?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was wondering, uh, the things that were in Mr. Pettit's letter, okay, is, are these intermanimal things, or, you know, what do we talk about here, if something that, in other words, where would be, who would kind of be, for the?
Yeah, I mean, you have to, either Brian, or you, we would probably want, and I, I think the board should want a new survey.
Oh, I, I understand, you know. What I was trying to say to you is that, uh, if we could hear a testimony?
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think we should have it.
Yeah, but then, if the board, no, you, I don't think we would be making a commitment tonight, other than if the board says, I, I don't feel that that burden of proof has been met. Okay? Then they're gonna know, well, we're not gonna, if we're not gonna get the use variance, why spend the money to try to comply with engineering, you know, what the, uh, what our engineer, or what the borough engineer says that we, uh, that we should have.
Just, just one, if, if you don't mind, some of the things that weren't in was proposed screening, landscaping, including planning, plan, store work, drainage, uh, building, there are more than two stories in height, uh, they want elevations. We're, we're not changing drainage, we're not putting any pipes in, we're not doing anything with water lines, we're not doing anything with sewage.
I understand perfectly, I read that, I read that, I know it's something, but the, the fact that we're not looking exactly?
I have, I have no problem with?
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. All right, we can update the survey.
When I'm looking at here, I need you to tell me what you wanna tell me. In this thing, but what am I really looking at here?
All you'd be, all the board would be hearing tonight i- is their argument of why a use variance should be get, and then you make the jump, well, you know, we don't think you made that argument, you know, you, you satisfied the, uh, the, the requirement. The requirements, I mean, I can recite you, but they're recited in John's letter, what needs to be shown. If you're not satisfied, you can't get a print of these. And then, you know, then at least they would have a?
Well, what I'm, what I'm basically saying is, if Mr. Bradley presents and the actors present this whole thing, okay, uh, remember what you tried to say, and, um, let me reserve that.
Yeah, honestly, let me testify as to what their arguments are.
Yeah, all we're trying to say tonight is whether we need to go to proof.
Well, I'm not gonna?
And, uh, special, special reasons to stop this. Mr. Bradley?
That man is gonna give you the purpose in the background of it, and I'll just plan and?
The only thing is, when, uh, we moved in, it was a storefront, and later on, when I closed the storefront, uh, my mother-in-law, which is ninety-nine years old, she kinda couldn't be alone anymore, so what we did was made our little apartment out of it, and we just stayed in the back, but nothing was added on, or, you know, the only thing we added on is the back deck, and that's been there for years since nineteen ninety-two.
Okay, can I point you back?
Yes, yes.
When did you folks buy the property?
Nineteen eighty-eight, okay.
And was that, when you bought it, was there a storefront?
Store, a back kitchen, a little tiny living room, and upstairs was the whole apartment.
And did you operate the store?
Oh, yes, okay. Since total nineteen, no, till, oh-two.
Oh-two.
Oh-two or oh-three.
Okay, and then, and then you closed the store?
Yeah, and that's when I brought my mother-in-law, over there for dogs.
Now, Pat, I mean, is, at that time, did, when you converted it, you took the store out and put a, uh, uh, you converted it into a, a living unit?
Yeah.
At that time, did you, did you recall if you got any permits or?
Yes, I did, yes, I did.
You did get a permit?
Yes.
So there would be a record of a permit in the, uh, somewhere in the record, I, I suppose. I mean, I think you all have knowledge of the store. Yeah. So you did get a permit, and do you recall what that permit said, allowed you to do? Did it say?
Well, I didn't change any plumbing, 'cause we had it there, we had a bathroom, we had a sink, you know, and we put the kitchen in the back wall where the sink was, um, and we didn't have to do anything, still has heat, has air conditioning in the window.
Did you put a separate u- entrance in?
Yes. No, no, it's the same entrance. We used the bath.
Okay, so the, the front entrance, does that?
That was the store entrance originally, and it's still the same.
Okay, so that just goes to the first floor?
Apartment.
Apartment, and it has no access to the second floor?
No.
All right, so you get to the second floor from the rear?
Yeah, oh, no, from the front, from, from the back. But, oh, upstairs, yeah, we come in the back door, we come in?
Does each, each unit has, has its own exclusive entrance?
Yes, yes.
That you can't get to eat the other unit from that entrance?
No.
In other words, the back door goes to your, you, you can't get?
No.
Okay.
The front is private by itself.
Did you introduce our own bathrooms, kitchens, everything like that?
Full, yeah.
Is mom still there?
How close?
Thirty-nine.
Ninety-nine.
Three hundred and thirty.
I'll miss a trip.
I'm assuming you only had one electric though?
No, we have a separate meter.
Two?
Yeah.
Oh, there's more?
Yeah, we have a separate meter. Yes, and electric.
When I did a site visit, I saw you had three entry doors in your, in your, or there are three doors in your front porch area.
There are storage rooms for that little building?
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's just storage rooms that's been like that since we've all been in with the?
All right, so the main entrance is the one?
We weren't gonna open it to make a porch, or, I never did.
And then the stairs going up to the second floor?
That's like a fire escape, if there's ever a fire, the steps come right down into my kitchen, so.
So there's dual, there's dual access to the second one?
Yes, second door, yeah.
Pat, are, are you folks intending to sell the place?
Not that I know of, not yet anyway.
Can I ask, just out of curiosity, what prompted you to come in for the, for the use variance now? Were you cited or anything like that?
No, but somebody had told me that I should get one.
You were being taxed for the commercial?
Yeah, I was being taxed for commercial, and then I went to Mr. Harrison, and he said, go to residential, 'cause we didn't have the store anymore, and I was talking to him, and then he said, you should go with a use variance because of the apartment.
And when was your taxes changed from commercial to residential?
Oh, honestly, I don't remember.
Ten years ago, five years ago, way after you closed the store?
No, it was a while after that, 'cause I kept getting hit with higher insurance, it was a commercial.
Now?
Maybe five years ago, I think.
If, if the board didn't grant this use variance, your, your mom would still be able to live with you, wouldn't she?
I hope so.
Well, I mean, if, if, is, is the apartment specially configured for handicap or?
Yeah, so I mean, there's, there's really, this is kind of just like an, I don't quite understand what we're trying to achieve here, so far as, where she's allowed to do what she's doing right now, and that's all she wants to do, and they're going out and they want you to benefit to the residents, right, the use variance.
Well, the use variance would give, give them the, the use variance goes with the land, it wouldn't be just conditioned?
Yes, permanent.
So then, yeah, then it's a permanent thing.
Yeah.
The board would have to be satisfied that there's a hardship.
Right.
Now, you know, what's the hardship? The hardship cannot be self-created. Hardships are usually because of the nature of the ground, or the configuration of the, uh, the nature of the land and the surrounding area, not the circumstances, that's what the engineers love, not the circumstances of the owner. Now, that's like one of the things you have to consider.
Right, and Brian?
I, I'm interested in, so Pat testified that you did obtain a permit, um, you know, and I, I don't know if that permit's still around to see what exactly was, what was applied for. If that permit indicated that she was converting it into a two-family and the permit was granted to her, then she could argue that she relied on that and converted, and then she may have a very strong argument why there's now hardship, but I don't, we don't, I don't know if we still have that permit or not.
Is there a difference between, say, like, an in-law suite and a separate, uh, unit for multi-family law?
Deborah, you can condition a, like, a variant, and make it subject to, it's only for that owner, and it wouldn't go with the property?
Right, yeah.
So that mom pay, you know, if mom's no longer there?
Right.
And it, the use would not continue?
What we're up against is, we don't have enough parking, like, I'm assuming mom doesn't drive, so if she doesn't have cars, that's not a problem, but if they were to sell this house in five years, how, sudden, it's a two-family thing, then that's when the parking box is in the, in the butt?
That, that, that was my concern, I wanted convenience, what we're gonna do.
Yeah, we, yeah.
I'm, I'm concerned too, and I, I don't know how this would work, but if it's zoned as a, a single-family unit, and then it would be converted to multi-family, wouldn't that increase the taxes?
It, absolutely could, you said, so we could go back down here?
So I don't understand the benefit for you, if that were to happen. In other words, you would be taxed harder than a single-family residential unit. If you were to go to multi-family dwelling, then, uh, in effect, you're really running a business, I guess.
That, that's what Mr. had to put in the paper, the affidavit publication, was in the paper on July twenty-third, yeah?
So I would think your taxes would increase if that?
Well, I, someone had talked, along the line, someone told me it was, one time it was taxed as a business and a residence.
Well, that, that's since been rectified, so it sounds like they already have the best of both worlds, and we don't have the parking to make it, uh, you know, more than one family dwelling, if it were to be sold, and to somebody that had two more cars, that's not gonna work.
I think what they, what they mentioned was the fact that they could make it conditional on a, being a family member, or at least the mother-in-law suite, and if you did this as a, a family committed to a family member, their idea is that if and when something happens to the mother-in-law, there's a daughter in the family, and the daughter could take over the apartment and have her own separate apartment, it's an older daughter.
But you don't need a variance, but?
She lives there now.
You don't need all that?
You testified the fact that there's gonna be one apartment behind and one apartment in front?
No.
It's just, it's just where the, where the store was, they made that into an apartment. What about the rest of the houses? I missed it in this property, I couldn't get home because the gate was locked, padlocked as a matter of fact. First time I came home, I, there was a car park on the side?
I have a padlocked on my gate. It wasn't my property.
There, there was a lot to be?
I have this gate, you lift the latch and it comes up.
But there's a sign here that says, you were a dog.
Yeah.
I'm out, I'm, I'm there as, as a, as a member of plenty, we're trying to assess the fact of what we're being asked to vote upon, and here's a sign that says a dog, and now I'm not going to go, I'm a fence, but there's a dog. Does the dog like that, like me?
Let me tell you, a dog doesn't like me, I'm, that's the number one. But, I mean, if you don't let us know, we would be more than willing to show them around the property.
Could've came in anytime, you just had to call me. There, there's no padlocked on the gate.
Okay, and one other question I have was, stairs that are on the side of the building?
Yes.
Over the top of the bay window, as shown on your plan?
Yes.
They, they occupy the, almost the, all of the side yard there on that side. You know that there's the four side yard areas on your application?
No, we're just asking, all those are existing conditions, we're just asking for a use variance.
Well, and I understand that, but we don't have an accurate representation of what half the property as-built is on the land right now. I don't know how you'd ask me to make any determination on whether I should vote and, and approve of this.
'Cause all, all, all we're asking for is the condition of a mother-in-law suite. We will get to a survey, and the engineer has suggested that possibly our impervious coverage exceeds, well, I mean, we would have to get a variance for that, for the impervious coverage. We can't carry out parking lots and parking spaces. And we have enough parking for our?
And what's the purpose of the stairs that go up above the front building? Is there another apartment up here?
It's upstairs.
Upstairs, is there another apartment?
No, that's, that's the living space that used to be for the, for the owners of the store, who was there, and they added on to the back, so they have that second door and that area.
That is, upstairs is the same way that we go in, just we're not?
Who would give a permit to build a, 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 from plants? But I can't understand, how did you get?
How, what did they?
The wind and fires did, I guess that's what I would call, was it comes from the second floor to the first?
We could say this.
Did the fire also, you, you?
Uh, somebody came out and saw?
First they have seven-foot setbacks on each side, you know, put a seven-foot setback in the property line.
You were trying to come to the board for, uh, fault areas on?
It might have even predated the, the law, but, you know.
I, I'm just, I'm, I'm confused as to why you're even asking for?
Me too. I see what you're gonna do.
Because it won't change anything, it won't change anything as far as what your situation is.
You already have it.
If anything, it would be detrimental, because you would increase your down?
So we should just stay with what we got, keep our setup?
Well, I don't? You said you already have it, you, you, you say in your testimony that there's a record of permit, you say in your testimony that it was changed from commercial to residential?
Right.
So, I mean, like Deb said, I think what we're gonna do is raise your taxes.
And what happens if I decide to sell in five or ten years from then?
What about, it's still a single-family?
Yeah, what?
I would like to make it a, a minimal suite where it's worth a little bit more money.
That's still a single, single-family.
See, I think, I think Pat's concerned, and?
It's not.
What, when they do sell, they want to sell it as a, as a two-family unit?
Yeah, but we ain't, but we can't, we have to have a parking, that's not gonna work.
Yeah, because that, you're talking about as a landlord tenant situation, rather than like a family.
And, and wouldn't it be a lot easier to sell it if the survey was after it? Well, I don't, it, it, no, it'd be a lot easier to sell, Dick, if, if there was a variance to permit a two-family?
Right.
Two-family structure here?
Right.
So then it could be sold as a duplex.
Right, that's not, you know, I don't think we had the station for that with the parking and anything else.
Yeah, so that, I think that's the folks' concern.
Right.
They're saying, look, this is, it was a two-family, it was always my mom, it was a family member?
Right.
But now we want to be able to sell that in, in that fashion. Now, the, the argument that you would do it as a, well, it can only be a mother-in-law suite or a family member, you're getting into a whole different other issue.
It's a big way out here, it's a big way out here.
You know, you, you can't define a family anymore.
I could get a waiver, of course, because it changes my down?
Right, yeah, or, or, or what a family is could change in five years, we, we don't know. But I think that's what Pat, and, and, that's what they're, if they sell that, they can't sell it, advertise it or reorder, but advertise it as a duplex.
No, fortunately.
It might be a two-family, and then a lender would come in and say, well, we want a zoning certificate that it is.
Well, it's not.
Yeah, it's, and it's not, so that's their problem, yeah. But unfortunately, that type of problem isn't a hardship?
No.
According to the law.
And frankly?
And Brian would, you, right, yeah, I agree, that's?
And frankly, and frankly, to the, to the contrary, it's, it would actually be a detriment to the neighborhood if there wasn't a parking, so we can't say it would be a benefit to the neighborhood, because we have two more parks, no place to park, you know?
Well?
Outside the street, parking.
Also, Madam Secretary, here's a notice, what the?
We're here, we're?
As a mother-in-law apartment, right, which you need, to notice the fact that it's only for?
Well, I mean, Dave, we just want to call the board for their?
Yeah, I don't think they need anything to let mom stay, you got? I hope you don't? One hundred and twenty. Well, I wanna do it, so I drive my kids nuts, I wanna, I wanna live on her. Uh, but, yeah, I think if, if we ended with the board saying, well, you know, we would like to sell it that way as a duplex, at least the board knows, well, this is what we're dealing with, can we do it comfortably and be within the law, or no, we find that it's not? Or, "No, do we find that it's not the type of hardship that we would be looking, looking for?" Or being able to approve it.
He wants to vote on it?
Or you could just poll the board, what they, of course, they want additional testimony. Now, if there's, if there's testimony that it advances the public good?
Yeah, listen, just poll the board, if they wanna come back, they can always come back, they'll give you features.
Paul, man?
Why is it poll the board at this point in time? Mr. Ober?
You know, I'm sure, I'm sure that, uh, that several members of the board have various questions that need to be answered, but, you know, I don't think we're down to one, just one area that we're gonna have one question.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know, it was apparent to me that this is one to be done. But, again, as I was speaking to my, uh, associate to my right, uh, in order to get it to a multi-family dwelling, things had to be done to it. Things have to be in place for that to happen, so... And, and we don't have the luxury, I'm assuming, that we don't have that, uh, permits that were ready to be available nineteen eighty-eight either, to see what was done. But the, we, Pat told us that there's two, yes, uh, water, gas, and electric meters, so that's afterthought, so to speak, but I don't think there's any clear, one definite thing that's gonna answer every question.
Brian, what's, what are your, I guess, biggest intentions with the, with your engineering standpoint?
Our biggest concern with parking, uh, you only have one side of the street parking.
Yeah.
The, the driveway is not adequate enough to house the required number of parking spaces. Um, so, again, if they want to extend the parking, the driveway out more, the town does have off-street requirements, so that driveway will have to get larger, then the impervious coverage will get larger too, so that goes back to, um, the, the variance.
Impervious coverage. So what we could do is extend that driveway back past the gate.
That's the key, right?
You could pick up two or three more cars.
And it looks like there's tight quarters there anyway on that property, you know?
Maybe I might help.
Your setbacks.
I, I know you have, Mr. Bradley, or Mr. Bradley. Uh, I know you have an answer for everything, but I think you need to come with a package about, you know what I'm saying? There's too many, this is this, that is that.
Well, the other, the other problem we have to decide is whether how much money we want to spend.
Well, that, that's your choice.
And I think, and, and that is a choice, that is obviously a factor, so maybe if the board is bold, and they feel whether you, they feel that the hardship requirement hasn't been met, then at least they know, "Well, look, if we spend, well, we're not gonna get this, we're not getting use variants."
All right, June, you wanna, David, have also any questions before June calls the board? All right, what, can you?
I think by the comments, that, that, and, and Mr. Bradley knows what they need to know, if he's saying that, that they will comply with this thing.
Yeah, but that's-
But you can't do that.
No, you, that's comply with engineering, but what they have to do is prove first that the criteria's been satisfied to grant the use variance.
Right.
Right, then complying with any engineering, that, that's the second phase.
Second part.
So basically, what we're deciding is, uh-
If they met third?
If there's a hardship.
Right.
Right, right.
They, they can't sell it?
Oh, they can sell it, but they can't sell it as a duplex.
And financial, and financial can't be-
Yeah, I mean, could they sell it as a single family, and somebody else moves their mother in? Or their elderly? I don't think the board would stop doing that.
Only July.
But, but financial can't be, financial can't be a reason for the hardship, yeah, under, under the law. So, right, and in my opinion on this is, I think you're in good shape with what you have, the way it is. I don't think anybody's gonna give you a hard time. Um, I, uh, I don't think there's any hardship going on here, as far as you're able to do what you wanna do. Um, I don't think it's gonna be a good candidate for two families to live in, with, with the lack of parking and, and the impervious covers that additional driveways would, uh, you know, bring, bring to light. So I think, uh, you can accomplish what you need to do without taking any action myself. Would you pick this up?
Pass to the next person.
Uh, yeah, I feel the same way, and for your own sake, I, I would hate to see you have to spend no money on, uh, something. And in my opinion, um, I can't imagine anything changing substantially, as far as, you getting another survey, uh, as far as my feeling, that, that's not a property suited to that. Um, so, uh, I'm probably just saying no, regardless of what, uh, plans or anything else you, you do. So, you know, I, I don't wanna see you spending no money on that.
What would I have to do to make it a duplex then?
Well, that's what you-
Where I can legally rent it out?
That's, that's what you're asking for now, Pat, you're asking that now for a use variance. That's what you have.
That's not soon for it.
You're, you're, you came before the, before your application, "I wanna make this a two-family, and I wanna make it a duplex."
So I can't do that.
It looks like they would not act favorably, that they don't feel there's a hardship. I don't know if the other members-
Let's, let's go to Rob.
Yeah, Rob, now.
Yeah, I don't feel there's any hardship here, and I, I think I would just lie as it is. I couldn't, there's an act.
Scott?
I couldn't say, Mr. Roff, please.
Mr. Roff, please?
I think there's a lot of hurdles to overcome to convince us it'll be a hardship, so I haven't seen hardship, I think I would-
In fact, a hardship wouldn't be, geez, folks, I could get a little more for this if I had this, that, that doesn't satisfy the hardship. And a hardship isn't, you can't argue a hardship that, well, it's some, something that you created. Well, I did this, and geez, now I have a hardship. Yeah, that's, that, you, they can't give relief, and there's case law on that, you can't give relief on a self-created hardship. I think the board's saying, "If you sold this, and it was to a family like you that took care of mom or dad, which is great," I don't think they'd care about that.
No, of course not.
Yeah, I don't think they would care about that one, you know, even if mom or dad had her own separate entrance to go in. But I, I think, to formally say, this is now a permitted duplex in, in a single-family residential zone, it sounds like they're having difficulty that they don't think you could meet that burden. And then what a board has to consider too, if they do grant it, what about the next-door neighbor? You know, "Well, you granted it for Pat and her husband, why can't you do it for me?" My husband, he said, "I mean," you know, then you could create, and you, then that goes against the intent of the zoning ordinance, which is one of the criteria you have to prove, you have to prove that the granting of the use variance does that, does that detrimentally affect the intent of the zoning ordinance?
And it's gonna benefit, and it'll benefit the town, and it's really worth it. So, I appreciate you guys coming in, and I thank you for-
Well, let me ask the question, where are we now, we own a duplex or a mother-in-law suite?
They were asking that it be formally converted, a use variance for me and Dick, to formally recognize it as a duplex, a two-family unit.
Well, again, in fact, the testimony here, there's a notice in the paper, it says they're asking for a mother-in-law-
Well, whether it was a mother-in-law suite, they, they testified that their intent was to make it a duplex.
So, this is what everybody within two-hundred thinks.
I understand that, but that, whether it's characterized as a, 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 a mother-in-law suite or a family member's suite, they give a testimony that it was, they wanted a duplex, or they wanted a two-family.
What gave you opinion on the two?
I, I would only approve it if it was, if it can ever be converted into a duplex.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Well, and basically, I think the rest of the members say they don't feel there was a hardship.
It doesn't change.
Yeah.
We're not gonna take any action.
I'm not against your mother.
No, that's-
I don't even know your mother.
No, we're not gonna take any action, basically.
The only action that we would have to take, now, what, what the applicant has the right to do is either withdraw their application, which is without prejudice, or call for a vote.
Right.
Could we, could we ask for a table, so we would have an opportunity to investigate the cost of being able to resolve some of these issues and be back next month?
Addison, I think the board is saying, geez, folks, we don't want you to spend that money, because we don't think you can prove the hardship. I think the board's trying to be reasonable.
Everybody says that, that money, and, we don't, I don't want that money, I just don't want-
There's a hardship, yes, there's a hardship.
I don't think, even if it only cost you three-hundred, I think, they're, they're, they feel that you haven't proved the hardship, and you can't prove the hardship.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, you can withdraw without prejudice, which means you can bring it in, you can bring it again, they haven't voted on. If we, if you call for-
I'm saying they're not gonna vote on.
No, I think they-
If we voted, we would probably vote without, without the vote.
Yeah, not in favor.
Not in favor, so why strike a vote?
And if they vote not in favor, Pat, then you can't bring it again.
That's why I said I'd hate to see you spend it.
Just keep your doors open.
Okay.
Okay.
For maximum.
No, no, not for maximum. If, if, if you withdraw, so withdrawn, and at any time you can bring it back and reapply.
Do you?
Yeah, you can reapply.
Yeah.
But once they vote, that closes the door.
Still want to withdraw it?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Riley is, is going to withdraw his application at this point in time?
That's what you're doing, that you're going to withdraw at this time?
All right, guys, well, thank you very much for coming, I hope, I hope you understand everything that we were talking about this evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, next word of business, it is old business, we have an old business to go through. We're gonna wait until we have a full, I think, this, our new businesses and stuff. Uh, communication, June, you have call course guides for Rutgers? Okay. Good welfare, at this point in time, I'd like to open the meeting up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever, please come forward and hear it. Okay, motion included by Mr. Oplley.
I have one thing, I'd like to read this to the board.
Okay, include welfare, or just?
I'm including welfare.
Okay, good, sorry.
It says, "Environmental Resources Inc. for Professional Engineering Design Services. Unstreeped roof from black horse white arby shell, and combined after the coaster fights hundred feet in iron, and I said six hundred thirty-one thousand." The county is going to have for a plan to reap surface, clean the strip roof, and I don't know if the newspaper notified, I picked it up in the newspaper, and I felt it come to find myself to mention this to the board.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, motion was on the floor by Mr. Oplley to close good welfare for second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ford then.
Mr. Ford, too.
Uh, motion to adjourn the meeting, Mr. Oplley and Mr. Dickinson.